California order at 7:00 P.M. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh, sorry. Is there additions to the agenda?
No, there's no additions. It was just different than the one you and I reviewed on Thursday.
All right. Motion to adopt agenda. Cutler. All in favor? Approved. Adoption of regular minutes from June 12th.
I'll make a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes of June 12th. I spoke.
Counselor Kettles. All in favor? Approved. Item one. Delegation Rural Development Network. Social Needs Assessment.
Yeah, so we have with us our FCSS director here, Barb Bell. She's in the building with us and we have remotely connecting our members of RDN, who perform the social needs assessment for us. Assad Body and Diane. Diane Odette. So they prepared a presentation on the social needs assessment. If council recalls, they contracted RDN at the end of 2021, beginning of 2022, to perform the social, the housing needs assessment, the affordable housing strategy and the social needs assessment. And this is the last document that was part of that original contract. So we'll turn it over to RDN.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Abe, for having us. And thank you to council again for having us for this presentation. As you recall, I think a few weeks ago now, we presented on the needs assessment, the housing need assessment and the strategy. So as Abe was mentioning, this is just the last kind of piece as part of that scope of work. And I'm joined here with my colleague Diane. And, you know, she'll be taking care of most of the presentation. So what I can do is that I can, I believe I have the permission, so I will share my screen. I will just... Put it all full screen here. I think that's coming up all right for everybody. So with that, I'll give a quick intro and then we'll take things from there. So yeah, like I mentioned, this is just to go over the social needs assessment that was prepared for the town of Clare's Home. It was a joint initiative approach from our organization with the Sustainable Housing Initiative, our housing-focused arm, obviously, as well as the Health and Wellness Initiative at the RDN. So as mentioned, it's going to be taken care of, the presentation by Diane, who worked on the social needs assessment with Jesse. So without further ado, I will pass it on to her to take care of everything else.
Thanks, Assad. You can, if you don't mind, Assad, can you forward the slides as we go? So save the best for last, so we get to talk about the social needs assessment. And again, I can't reiterate enough that I appreciate Clare's Home taking preventative and forward steps on engaging RDN to do the housing needs assessment and the social needs assessment hand in hand, because not many communities are making it realize that they actually do go and they coordinate together and they're linked together. For those who don't know what a social needs assessment is, this is my inner geek and I love these social needs assessments. So social needs assessments look at how people live in a society, culture, community, the medical knowledge and political systems. So it's looking at all of the systems together through the lens of community. So it puts the emphasis on the environment and the effect on social impact. So the presentation, I apologize, my husband just came home and my granddaughter's going to go wild here right away. So I apologize now for any background noise, because they don't know how to be quiet. So for the outline, the presentation is going to be brief, but please ask questions if you just want to pop in and ask questions, please do, or wait till the end, or kind of play it by ear. Or if you just want to ask Barb questions, I'm fully fine with that. So we'll do the organizational background, which is going to be the same that Assad did a week ago, then my project background, the key findings and my recommendations. Go ahead, Assad. Just one second, please. I apologize. So RDN, again, same as Assad did last week, so I'll just zip over this. So RDN is a nonprofit group that offers community social development services on a cost-recover basis. I'm just going to leave it at that, because Assad probably went through very thoroughly last go. Oh, Jesus, Assad, what are you doing? Okay, project background. So now I'll just get into the, where I love to dig, the, what we've been doing. So the project, purpose of the project, so similar to what Assad would have reflected on his presentation, but this time, we're conducting a social needs assessment to better understand the quality of life of Clare's Home residents and areas to focus on for support services. Go ahead, Assad. Okay, so the social needs assessment. So we looked at specific things within Clare's Home. So Clare's Home demographics, community health data, the resident and the online surveys that were conducted, and the community engagement sessions when Jesse and I were there. So we did three in person and one virtual. So then I just gathered all of that information and put that lens on the specific information that I was looking at that gathered around again, specific to Clare's Home. Go ahead, Assad. Okay, so the key findings. So what we found. So Clare's Home residents and as compared to and aligned with the social determinants of health. So we're finding, we have found that Clare's Home residents are more likely to come from the ethnocultural majority group of the province and more likely to be homeowners and more likely to have two-parent families. They're also less likely to need emergency department for help for drugs and alcohol. However, the issues still exist in the community and a lack of emergency department use does not necessarily mean that chronic usage is not a problem. Go ahead, Assad. So the Clare's Home residents and the demographics. So again, I'm basically preaching to the choir, because you know this information. I've just kind of wrapped it in a nice neat pretty package. So high-risk renters who struggle with expensive and substandard housing, which can be exacerbated by the low housing supply. A significant number of household maintainers are over the age of 65. This means residents may need more focus and in-person outreach. Income levels are also lower in the town, which may be a result of the higher retired population. Higher rates of people living with three or more chronic illnesses and people using the emergency department for medical, mental health issues. And the biggest concern for social service providers may be related to aging, housing, mental health and income inequality. When Jesse and I were there, I'm still shocked, but again, I'm preaching to the choir. We were there and a house was sold within 45 minutes of being listed. I'm still shocked by that. But I'm kind of have a feeling that could be the norm. So that's, that experience has really supported this document and our knowledge for other communities. Go ahead, Assad. So now we're going to delve quickly into the survey findings. So this are, these are the online surveys that were given to community and youth in the spring of 2022. So we did have 100, oh, and paper copy surveys also, I might need to add. So we actually had, we had clean 100 surveys completed, which is phenomenal. So out of those 100 surveys, the top five issues that were identified by community members were substance abuse and addictions, mental health issues, depression, bullying and violence. So that's, again, kind of gauged the social needs assessment and again, how it looks onto the supports within Clare's Home. Assad? So then the survey results of priority of social needs. So one question was, where do the residents prioritize their social needs? So the adults prioritized the substance abuse and addictions first, then mental health issues, like those are obviously, you can see it's very, very close. Basic needs not being met, lack of work and being underemployed and bullying. As compared to next slide, Assad? Now, the youth on the kind of other side of the coin, substance abuse and addictions was their number one priority of social needs. But then the rest were all tied. So self-harming, lack of work, mental health and bullying. And they were tied with the same amount of responses. So looking at it this way, the youth and the adults, their responses are not very far apart. They're still in the same ballpark, concerned about the same issue. Go ahead, Assad. The stakeholder interviews. So these are when Jesse and I were onsite. So mental health and depression is a large concern. It was expressed a few times that the healthcare system is struggling. No quick access for anyone needing mental health supports. Increase the use of support groups and create activities to make a connection are beneficial. So a lot of these bullet points that are here, we talked about in depth at the stakeholder sessions. And I really feel that a lot of awareness was made in some of the stakeholder interviews, because some individuals weren't aware of the mental health supports needing to be increased. Because it sounds like you have a lonely AHS worker, mental health worker, that nobody seems to really know about. But then on the other side of the coin, you've got the emergency room being overused with mental health concerns. So it's, just makes a person wonder about awareness in the community. Go ahead, Assad. Substance abuse. So it was also brought up that youth know who and where to go to get the listed drugs and alcohol. It's more skeptical than Clare's Home, who's the dealer's harm and where the youth can, and whoever's seeking it can get it very easily. And it seems to be a culture of acceptance and it needs to, this culture of acceptance needs to be disrupted. How it should be disrupted is up to Clare's Home and the residents of how you want it disrupted, whether it's RCMP, whether it's service providers, whether it's community at large, that's for Clare's Home to work what's best for your community. And collaboration and community buy-in are needed to create this disruption. Go ahead, Assad. Basic needs are not being met. Only one grocery store down and it's going to be a positive and negative impact on the community. So discussed at length, the positives and negatives of the one grocery store. And I really hope this last bullet has changed. When I was making the slide show, I thought, oh, we're now in June. Please tell me this has changed. But when we were there, beginning of September, we were advised that the food bank is losing its funding at the end of September. I hope something changed, that the food bank was able to be picked up by another agency. I really, fingers still and eyes crossed, hope that after this you can advise me that the food bank got miraculous funding and was able to run. I really, really hope. Assad? The stakeholder interviews homelessness. Clare's Home has a house for population. Again, preaching to the choir, know this. Individuals may be paying more than 30% of the income for housing and there's no affordable housing in Clare's Home to date. Assad? So recommended actions. Again, these are recommendations. This is from outsiders' eyes looking in. You, this is up to clerk or town council to go forth with what you feel that you want to go with. Pick the quick wins, honestly. Pick the quick wins, celebrate those wins and go to the tougher ones. But first and foremost, educate the community about the resources. Create awareness of what is available or create new resources that are out there. I'm a huge grassroots person. Born and raised in east central Alberta and a farming community. So the resources aren't out there. Now I live in northeastern Alberta and I live further away from civilization. So grassroots is paramount to supporting community. Number two recommended actions. Issues are intertwined with each other. So we have a ball of chaos happening here and a ball of issues and everything. So homelessness is occurring because the rent is too high. The limited housing supply may lead to mental health issues. If food scarcity is a concern, student can't, whoops, I got a glitch in there, cannot perform at the optimal. And programming needs to be concentrated on one area and affected areas can naturally subside. Prevention is paramount. So create the necessary resources to support the community. We all know that resources are scarce. Money is scarce to create the resources that we all, communities need and want. But within community, great things can happen. This one I was surprised to hear of, but so that I made sure it was a recommended action. Reduce the silos within the community. You guys have some great, great resources there and agencies and services, but not everybody's on the same page for their own reasons. There needs to be, to find a community champion to help the groups to see their value in coming together. So the more people at the table, the less, it's on one person's shoulders or one agency's shoulders, share the load and great things will come. Community engagement. Keep the community informed on the steps needed and where projects are at. This will help mitigate the churning gossip wheels and the mixed messages and the myths. So as elected officials, you don't have to demyth one more thing. That the information is clear, concise and comes from a place of respect. So whether it's in, I remember there was the newspaper gentleman had a little blurb in the newspaper about kind of what's happening in Clare's Home to do that, or a pick on Abe from the desk of Abe, or whatever have you. Just so the community is aware of what stage things are at and the projects are at, and what the projects are. And if help from community volunteers needs to come in or just to get that ad hoc going. Yeah, Assad, next slide. Oh, that's it? That's me in a nutshell. I love to talk, so I just want to, I just got warmed up. Any questions, concerns, comments? Please let me know.
Yeah, and before, before quickly, I think we handed back off. I think just because, you know, for council, we presented on the housing needs assessment and the strategy, and now just because of time, we had to present the social needs assessment at this time. So both the housing needs assessment that was presented prior and the social needs assessment went into the development of the strategy, because it helped develop things from both the quantitative analysis, you know, using data from StatSCAD and the data that we were able to get from the province and other sources, as well as like a lot of the qualitative data that Diane has shared here, which allows us to look at the viewpoints of the community, what the involved stakeholders are saying, both the residents as well as the people kind of on the ground in this space. So it's a really nice combination of information to make sure that the strategic recommendations we're making at the end in the strategy are taking into account all of the information that's available and make sense of all of the data that we have in that, in that report. But yeah, no, thank you so much for listening to our presentation and would like to pass it back to Abe now.
Questions, concerns? Counselor Cutler?
So first of all, I'd like to thank you for your time and your efforts on the survey. But I am, I am really kind of struggling with the facts of the survey. We do have a diverse mental health service program within the community with many therapists and many programs. We have, we do have affordable housing. We have low-income housing. We have social housing for seniors. We have a lot of resources within that. They may be full, but they're still here. We have a great interagency program that collaborates all the agencies and the groups within the Clare's Home area to make sure they're updated on programs and available services. Food bank funding has never been insecure. We don't know where that came from. And food scarcity, we have three programs within our community to deal with all of that, that have been brought up and dealt in and incorporated within our community. So I am sitting here kind of struggling with the whole needs assessment, understanding of where you see our weaknesses. I, I don't, I don't know where you got that information from.
Sure, I can answer that one. And thank you for your comments. I do greatly appreciate them. So with the food bank, the affordable housing, all of that came from the, when we were in person at the stakeholders sessions. So that would have been the morning session and afternoon session. Barb, I don't remember that one lady's name who brought up about the food bank. So I think there might be some information that might have evolved since I've been there, which I really hope so, because this is back in September and things can change. Do you remember who I'm speaking about, Barb, that was bringing up?
Well, I don't, I don't really think it matters who it was. I don't think we need a name of somebody who made a comment of the sourcing. But I just, I just worry with the idea that if the assessment's done and these concerns are brought up, that there was some research done within the community to see if they're already being met? Or are these just strictly concerns brought up by community members at these stakeholder meetings?
They were from service providers. So that is information about the interagency who brought them. But with the silos, the invited parties of service providers to come to these sessions, that it would have been very beneficial to them and to us as a group. Us needing as a group, they were radio silenced. And by the sound of it, it's historical, so that's with the silos. So there are still silos happening even with the great efforts of the interagency group.
Yeah, and so I guess just adding on to Diane's comment. So a lot of the information in the assessment was a, was a look at like the qualitative information that we were getting from these consultations. So a lot of it is reporting what was said, as Dan mentioned, by the, by the service agencies that we were, that we were interviewing. And so it was a matter of understanding, you know, as the, as the groups on, that are providing the resources and the supports, what do they feel? Are the, are the gaps and the, say, the shortcomings or the improvements that can be made in Clare's Home system? And then it was analysis of understanding what those are and then evaluating, okay, well then, does that align with some of the data that we had looked at, mostly when the housing's out on the housing needs assessment, in order to make those strategic recommendations at the end? The housing needs assessment, as I mentioned, does touch on a lot of the information in this social needs assessment, but it of course, as it is a housing one, has a housing focus. And so a lot of the information that we had evaluated from these consultations and from these interviews were then, you know, property, what, does that make sense of what the data is showing in our quantitative analysis?
Counselor Kettles?
I kind of sit with Counselor Cutler on this one. It, in some ways, it sounds like it was a report on a different town. I worry that maybe the engagement in both the sessions and the surveys, I noticed that, you know, only five youth were, surveys were done. I worry that maybe, you know, those that were present in the room caused this survey to be a bit of an over-amplification of what we perceive as the reality in town. And maybe I need to take off my rose-colored glasses, but I'm not completely seeing it. You know, I think we're pretty well-integrated. We have an immense mental health coordination effort in this, in this town. And it's absolutely an issue. And perhaps in some ways, Clare's Home is overrepresented by the issue, but we also have immense capabilities to deal in those areas. So anyway, perhaps it's my rose-colored glasses, so I'll defer to the experts on it, but that's where I sit.
Oh, thank you for that. For the surveys, so I think the thing is kind of skewed. So the surveys, the 100 and the five youth, those were conducted online in the spring. So those are Clare's Home, there was some individuals from Granum, did more of the paper surveys and then the youth or anyone. So as the surveys were advertised, community members could just pop on and do the surveys online. In regards to why mental health was brought up, I fully recognize you have some, you have AHS services at your doorstep. The issue with the medical services is it's not an immediate. So if somebody's having a mental health crisis breakdown or their mental health is, they need help now, ER is going to be the first place to go, but then they wait and they wait. They can't get into that AHS facility immediately. They have to wait. Then on the reverse side, people who are able to exit the Alberta Health Services Facility are kind of caught in limbo. They may not be able to leave Clare's Home, because they don't have the supports and the resources, or they need to stay in to maintain their appointments, maintain that connection with the mental health services to make sure that they're stable. So there are some, some gaps that do occur that unless you're in that field, you may not be aware. So as a community member, you, unless you have someone involved, you may not see that. So that was the biggest with the, with the mental health, that you can't get an immediate support unless you go through the ER. But then you're discharged, because the ER is for, historically, not for that. But we're having to use the ER across Alberta in those ways.
I just worry there wasn't enough analysis and investigation into, into these facts. Yes, you did the surveys. Yes, you did in person, but I don't feel there was enough analysis and investigation done after the fact.
I can totally appreciate that comment and thank you for that as well. So it was, it was a matter of what was achievable also within the scope of what we, what we had to do with the, with the project. So obviously initially, it was a, very much initially. And I think council was probably more aware of this than I am. But it was, it was an investigation into the housing needs assessment, or rather, the housing system in Clare's Home, which was the housing needs assessment, and then recommended strategies from a housing perspective. But then we wanted to ensure that service agencies would also be consulted as part of what this approach could be, although it wasn't going to be a full service strategy and full recommendation based on, like, you know, as you're mentioning, a full analysis of what the services are and what is strictly required and maybe some more technical details on what those should be, logistically and otherwise. It wasn't a full analysis of that, but it was just to ensure that those stakeholders were being involved in the process, because housing for, you know, not just for certain agencies, but for a lot of their clientele, is very core to the, you know, the improvement of the people that they're serving. So they wanted to make sure that their voices were being held on the table. So I do definitely appreciate the, that the, you know, the honorable part was perhaps wanting... perhaps wanting in, in this analysis, but it was just a matter of the scope that we had, we had a set out to achieve when we were working on this, keeping in mind that overall the project was very housing focused.
I have a question for Barb. Are you happy with this report?
Well, I did give a very large list of agencies that in my opinion, I thought that they were going to contact the people that were running the agencies. I don't think that happened. And I mean, we didn't have a huge showing of any of the, when they had the in-person meetings, there wasn't very many people here.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item one, Bylaw 1761 Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Abe? Thanks Barb.
Did you want to pass a motion to accept the assessment?
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the assessment for what it is and we'll take a look at it and we'll use it moving forward. I mean, it is what it is and it is what we got and, and yeah, I'll make a motion to accept it for what it is.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve the social needs assessment as presented.
All in favor? Opposed? Thanks Barb.
Thanks Barb.
Item one, Bylaw 1761 Land Use Bylaw Amendment. Abe?
Yes, it was. Okay, so the town has received a land use bylaw amendment application for rezoning of land located at 212 50th Avenue West from R1 Single Detached Residential to C1 Retail Commercial. And the purpose of the rezoning is to allow the property to be used as spa service, spa service and mixed use residential, so to have a suite in there as well along with the business. Normally it would be a home occupation. However, the applicant, the homeowner doesn't live in the house. And so it just, in line with our policies, that application wouldn't be approved for a home occupation. So the owner has suggested, proposed a land use bylaw amendment to C1 Retail Commercial. No concerns from ORSC. This was sent out to ORSC, no concerns from ORSC, no concerns from the development officer either, as this is kind of bordering our commercial area anyways, and we do have some other places like this in town. And then having first reading allows us to go through the process of circulating neighbors and having a public hearing in case there are any concerns that come up. And then the actual permitting that use would come at a later stage through MPC and that conversation could be had at that time.
Questions, concerns? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to give Bylaw Number 1761 a land use bylaw amendment first reading.
All in favor? Approved. Number two, correspondence, Honorable Rick MacIver, Minister of Municipal Affairs. Abe?
So we have a new Minister of Municipal Affairs. It's a familiar face. Rick MacIver was previously the minister in 2021 for a period. And so this is just correspondent that's gone out to municipalities throughout the province explaining that he's back and looking forward to working with communities and, and helping them prosper and, and grow. So just information item for you, counsel.
Thank you. Number three, correspondence, Alberta Municipal Affairs. Abe?
So in September, there will be an Alberta Municipalities Conference and normally councils have an opportunity to speak with different ministers in, in the ministers throughout the province to discuss matters that are important to their communities. This one is from Minister MacIver seeking engagement with different councils throughout the province. Previously council met with Minister MacIver in 2022 to discuss the code of conduct bylaw. So if council has anything that they're interested in discussing with the minister, we can fill out an application and get in the queue.
Couldn't hurt. Municipal funding.
Do, who would we have going to the meeting this fall? Have we figured that out yet?
Nope.
I said that's unclear at the moment. It would be after the election.
But I guess like you say, we could get in the queue and figure it out later. And if nothing else, like I say, funding's always an issue and.
I think he just nominated me and you, Rod.
I didn't see that.
Okay, is that all you need for that?
I'd like a motion.
Yep.
A motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we set up a meeting with Rick MacIver, Minister of Municipal Affairs to determine who's going.
Yep.
Moved by Counselor Schlossberger to request a meeting at the Alberta Municipalities Convention from September 27th to 29th, 2023 with the Honorable Rick MacIver, Minister of Municipal Affairs to, to discuss municipal funding.
All in favor? Approved. Okay. Correspondents, Alberta Arts, Culture and Status of Women, Stars of Alberta Volunteer Awards. Abe?
Yeah, so Alberta Arts, Culture and Status of Women has yearly nominations for volunteers throughout the province called the Stars of Alberta Volunteer Awards. They are looking for nominations from various groups and communities throughout the province. There are nine awards offered, two in each categories of youth, adult and senior, and three in the breaking barriers category, which recognizes individuals addressing racism, advocating for LGBTQ S plus inclusion and fighting gender discrimination. So if council has anybody they would like us to nominate, we can prepare a nomination. Otherwise, it's an information item.
Any recommendations?
Not off the top of my head, but there's probably so many possibilities.
Take it for information? Okay. Correspondents, Alberta Municipalities, Recommendations on Future Intermunicipal Collaborations. Abe?
So Alberta Municipalities is currently doing a series called Future of Municipal Government. They previously did one on financing and financing and funding. And this is, I think, their third conversation, looking for feedback on intermunicipal collaboration. So this just again there for your information. If you have any questions or, or questions about that, we can look into anything for you, counsel. Otherwise, it's an information item.
Questions? Counselor Kettles?
I, I think our council and I guess our closest partner, the municipality, have a reasonably good story to tell along this line and we do a lot of this. So I don't want to throw our arm out patting ourselves on the back, but I think we do okay around this particular point anyway. So I'm just throwing that out there.
Yep. Okay, correspondence, Village of Barrens. Abe?
Yeah, so if you recall last council meeting, council set the parade routes for 2023, for the 2023 season, the parade visits. We do have a couple additional ones on the agenda here. If you'd like to go, we can try to coordinate and make sure things align with the existing schedule. But this one is from the Village of Barrens. Their parade is the morning of July the 8th. No advance sign up is required. All entries are welcome.
No registration?
No registration?
Show up.
Anybody interested?
I am not.
Thank you.
No takers, Abe. Okay, correspondence, Carmengay Horticultural Association Invitation. Abe?
So similar to the last one, counsel, this is the Carmengay Agricultural Society having the annual sports day and fair, August 4th to 6th and, and an annual parade as well. Parade being August 5th.
A little bit far away.
And also right before Fair Days.
Yeah.
Take it for information. Correspondents, Annual Fundraiser Golf Tournament. Abe?
So there is a golf tournament coming up hosted by some folks in Brockett. The tournament, I believe, is for a, for a housing initiative some sort or a, they had a golf tournament last year at the Clarets Home Golf, Golf Course and just welcoming various groups, including the town, to participate in the golf tournament. Sponsorship opportunities as well.
Interested in a sponsorship?
Do we have a raffle table? Usually that's what we put up is a basket.
You know, last year I don't think we did anything for this one. Normally we put, yeah, we do put baskets up though, Counselor Meister. Yes, if you're interested, we, right. I don't know if we've done anything for this group.
Counselor Kettles?
I, I would make a motion that we support it with a basket if that's appropriate. This is the second year that they've ran this tournament at our facility and, and it does nothing but help us and it's a pretty reasonable cause as, as for what they're looking for. So I'd certainly be willing to put that motion forward, limit it to what our normal is at, what is it, $150 or something?
Yeah.
Or 100, whatever it is, I don't know.
And if, and if there's no raffle table, then cash donation?
Yeah, we, we can find some kind of equivalent of donation or gift of that value.
So how much, what dollar value do you want to do?
100 is fine with me if that's early standard.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to support the golf tournament fundraiser being held by that name Limited at the Bridges at Clarets Home Golf Club on July 19th with a basket donation or cash donation of $100.
All in favor? Opposed? Approved. Correspondents, Clarets Home District Fair Days Bench Show. Abe?
So the Clarets Home District Fair Days Bench Show is taking place August 10th to 12th and over at the Community Center. And they will be partnering with the Lions Club and the Fair Days Beef on a Bun. They have included a request here for council to assist with covering the community center rental of $700 for the bench show. This is the first bench show since COVID put a stop to them. So it's been three or four years, four year absence. So they are looking forward to having their first bench show in a few years. Information about the variety of, a variety of things that are showcased include yard, yard and garden, grains, forages, range plants and nauseous weeds, yard and garden decor, flowers and plants, garden produce and fruits, heritage displays, et cetera. So. So they've requested for council to assist with the rental of the hall.
Questions, concerns? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to support the Clarets Home District Fair Days Bench Show with a donation of $700 towards the rental of the community center.
All in favor? Approved. Correspondents, Cynthia Wanamaker, Committee Member of CRAZ, CRAZ Annual Report. Abe?
So Calgary Regional Airshed Zone, as you know, council, you have paid a yearly membership and as part of that, you're provided, the town, council or the town has provided a representative to sit on various committees that CRAZ has and to participate in some of the research. Our representative from Clarets Home is Cynthia Wanamaker. She attended their AGM at the beginning of June. And so we've included the AGM in, actually in a separate link, this agenda was quite large, so we pulled a couple of items out of there, council. But that AGM. But that AGM, annual report, rather, has been shared with you. And here is Cynthia's summary of the AGM events. I can just briefly go through a few items that she's covered here. But it looks like CRAZ took over the operation of the air quality monitoring station and now operates four permanent stations, three of them in Calgary. They also have portable air monitoring labs, and they've been deployed to Alderside and Chestermere, six months in each location. Monitoring trends indicate that nitrogen dioxide levels are moving into levels that need management. So the data includes particulate from fires, transboundary pollution, lagoons, wetlands, as well as industrial pollution. Couple, 2018 and 2021 were years of highest H2S hydrogen sulfide exceedances. And overall, in 2020, 10% of the year, air was a concern in the Calgary area. So a few other notes in there for your information, council.
Questions, comments? Take it for information. Request for decision, West Meadow School Fund Run, ape.
Okay, so the West Meadow Elementary School Fundraising Society is looking to host a fundraising color walk, run, fun run on September 23rd, Saturday, September 23rd. The event will begin at 10:00 a.m. and wrap up by 12:00 noon. They've raising money for, proceeds from the event will be used to enhance educational experiences at the elementary school, including field trips, out-of-class learning activities, as well as assisting with the purchase of educational resources. The run is just around three, just under three kilometers, and so they will be having stations where they'll be hitting each other or throwing non-toxic hypoallergenic powder to burst on participants. So this is the first kick at the cat in having one of these runs. And so there is a map, an outline here of where they plan to run, which is basically around the elementary school yard, up 8th, all the way up to, is that West, sorry, is that Westland up there, or Duroshi? Sorry, Westland's at the other end. Up to Duroshi, and then loop back down to the track is where they'll, the high school track is where they'll end. So they would require some road closures on that Saturday for a few hours. We did run this by infrastructure, didn't have any concerns with that. They'd be happy to assist this group, have that run. So we would need a motion from council, but prior to that, any questions on the event?
Councillor Kettles?
I'm happy to make that motion, as long as they don't make me run with them.
If you want to throw color on them, that'll be the fun part.
Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to approve the following road closures on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. to facilitate the West Meadow Elementary School Fundraising Society Fun Run, 8th Street to 55th Avenue West to Duroshi Drive, including the intersections along 8th Street at 59th Avenue and Saskatchewan Crescent.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, prize donation to the Clare's Home Fire Department, ape.
So it is that time of year for the fire department's golf fundraiser. They will be having a four-person scramble golf tournament August 19th at the golf course in town. And previously, they've done this fundraiser, golf tournament fundraiser. They're currently raising funds for their Jaws of Life, that one's ongoing. They've hit that one on pause this year as they are going to be using the proceeds from this event to the fire hall expansion, which we are currently applying for provincial funding for. So that's where the proceeds will go this year. They have 36 hole sponsors available for $200 where the business would be advertised. Previously, council has purchased a gift basket, $150. Yeah, and that's what the request is this year.
Comments? Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve cash donation for a hole for $200.
Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to approve a cash donation of $200 to sponsor a hole at the Clare's Home Fire Department's annual golf fundraiser on Saturday, August 19th, 2023.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Contractor Agreement, Fire Inspection Services, ape.
Yeah, so we're looking to have a Fire Inspection Services agreement with the MD. We have previously had one with them prior to having our fire chief trained up to actually be able to perform these inspections, inspection services slash fire investigations. That lapsed when our fire chief got his training, never renewed that. But recently, we did use the MD to do some investigations. Once, once in a while, it's required when the fire chief is out of town, and the deputy fire chief can do some investigations as well, or inspections, rather. So the MD has requested that we get, again, get a contract in place. Spoke with the fire chief about this, very similar to the previous agreement we had in place. And again, it would only be used very rarely when the fire chief happens to be out of town or unavailable. He did point, the fire chief has pointed out that we are actually training another staff, another member of the department, so to have more built-in redundancy. But the agreement generally lays out the terms in which we would use the MD staff for the services. Any questions? We don't have any concerns with the agreement.
No questions, concerns? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Question?
Moved by councillor Meister to enter into a contract for fire inspection services with the MD of Willow Creek on an as-needed basis as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Economic Development Committee Chamber Representative, ape.
So the Chamber of Commerce, Clare's Home District Chamber of Commerce, is looking for a new representative to the Economic Development Committee. As per the Economic Development Committee bylaw, council approves all the representatives on that, all the committee members. And so the Chamber of Commerce has recommended that Jordy Bronson replace Brad Toon, who was previously the representative, the chamber representative on that committee. And so Economic Development Department has passed this RFD on to council, looking for approval of Jordy Bronson as the new Economic Development Committee Representative for the chamber.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion to approve Jordy? Councillor Kettles? Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to appoint Jordy Bronson as the new Clare's Home District Chamber of Commerce Representative on the Clare's Home Economic Development Committee.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Fair Days Parks and Road Closures. Ape.
So we are looking for a few, few motions on this one, council. Some road closures for some events and approvals for beer gardens at the Fair Days. We are going to be coming to you in the future for approval of some road closures for the parade route, but not quite ready for that conversation yet, as we're still trying to run through the proposed route that we have with operations to make sure it's going to be manageable. So that will be coming up at a future time. But essentially, what we're looking for are motions to approve the Skate Park Association for Beer Gardens at Amundsen on Saturday, August 12th, a motion to approve the Arts Society for Beer Garden in Centennial on Sunday, August 13th, and a motion to approve road closures to facilitate the Rocky Mountain Drift Club Drag Racing Demo on August the 14th.
Questions, concerns? Councillor Cutler?
Are she's going to make a motion to approve the beer gardens? I have no questions or concerns.
I am all for the Rocky Mountain Drift Club. I love what they do. They bring a lot of stuff here. It has been, over the last few years, brought to me by some of the people in town. Have we talked to Jason about shrinking their demonstration? There's some people over on that side of the town that are very sensitive to noise. They get that it's great. They would like to see it like maybe half hour, 45 minutes, maybe. They understand stuff needs to be done, but two hours of listening to that is a lot of noise for some of the people over there right by their houses. And I see they're bringing in a drag car, too. So if the little drift cars are loud, I imagine an alcohol-blown engine isn't going to sit very nicely with those people. So I don't know if we can, like, work with Jason to make it more condensed?
So I do know that last year was, it was, I don't know the details for this year, but last year it was supposed to be for two hours. It ended up being a little under an hour and a half. But what we can do is get some more details if it's supposed, just to ensure at least it's not longer than it was last year, because we are looking for road closures here from 4:30 to 7:00, right? So that indicates that it might be a little bit longer. But I can get more information for you on that one and more details about that event, and we can bring that back. I'm sure we can just bring that back at the next, that one back at the next council meeting.
Please.
Please. Questions? No?
Back to any more stuff?
Yeah, councillor Cutler has a motion on the floor. Question, please?
Moved by councillor Cutler to approve the Clare's Home Skate Park Association for a Beer Gardens in Amundsen Park, Saturday, August 12th, 2023, between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., on the condition that an application to the Alberta Liquor and Gaming Commission has been approved and is displayed at the event.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to approve the Arts Society Beer Garden for Centennial Park. Can I have a motion? Councillor Kettles? Question?
Moved by councillor Kettles to approve the Clare's Home Arts Society for a Beer Garden in Centennial Park on Sunday, August 13th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., on the condition that an application to the Alberta Liquor and Gaming Commission has been approved and is displayed at the event.
All in favor? Approved. And we're bringing in the back the third motion, so we'll have that next meeting. Okay. Request for decision, committee vacancies, ape.
Yeah, so. At the March 27th meeting, council made motions to cover the board and committee appointments for the former mayor, Chelsea Petrovic, when she opted to take a leave of absence. And so at that time, I think most of you just assumed representation on her various committees, they were handed out to the rest of council. And so that motion read until May 30th, 2023, that those appointments would be in place. We're suggesting that we get a new motion, just to carry on as is until after the election, and we can have another, basically, an organizational meeting. And just to approve the existing, the appointments just as the way they are right now, until after the election.
Questions, concerns? Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend those appointments.
Councillor Zimmer? Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to extend the temporary appointments to boards and committees as approved at the March 27th, 2023, regular council meeting until after a new mayor has been elected.
All in favor? Approved. Financial report. Ape.
Yeah, council, for your information and for the public's information, there's a year-to-date financial report as of May 30th, May, sorry, May 31st, 2023.
Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to accept the income statement by object from May 31st, 2023.
Thank you. Question?
Moved by councillor Zimmer to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended May 31st, 2023, as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, Canada Day, Spread the Word, ape. Whirl, sorry.
But also spread the word. Yeah, so just some information, council. Saturday, July 1st, Clare's Home Canada Day and Spread the World celebrations include lineup of activities and economic development. Just wanted to get this on the agenda to promote the event. The kickoff celebration at Centennial Park happens at 11 o'clock with the flag raising and the singing of the National Anthem. And as well, the engagement coordinator, community event committee, Clare's Home Museum and Willow Creek Immigration Services have a multicultural events that will be enjoyed by residents of all ages. So they'll have some singers who do bilingual rendition of Oh Canada, a Caribbean Still Drum Band, and the energetic Brienne Urban. The event will be hosted by Julia Moore, who has prepared an exciting game with prizes donated by businesses and individuals. And to ensure that Canada Day, Canada Day, Canada Day caters to everyone's interests, a range of activities and attractions will be available, water fight with the fire department, temporary sparkle tattoos, professional face painting, lawn games, beer garden, barbecue as well, proceeds going to the Town of Clare's Home Community Events, and a number of other items. Third annual Spread the World Experience include 14 countries represented by volunteers who will proudly showcase their heritage and culture through displays, food and experiences. And so participants use their passport to prizes, to collect a sticker from each country visited. And those who compete in Spread the World will be entered to win a free Alberta Parks Pass for the year.
Nice.
Yeah. A little conversation there as well about the Canada Day Window decorating contest in town. If you notice, as you're driving through the business sector, it looks pretty good out there. So Town Office has participated in that as well. You can see some, some deckles on our front windows there. So just trying to get the word out about the event. I believe we're going to have some councillors and staff flipping burgers and spinning wieners at the event.
Don't forget the cupcakes.
Cupcakes.
Don't forget the cupcakes.
Cupcake wings, right?
Yeah.
I'll be doing burgers, too.
Oh, you're not burgers, though? I'm out. I can't. It's all gray to me.
Okay, information brief, CRO report. Abe?
Just for your information, council, a report on, from our departments and various staff on what they've been up to the last month. Any questions on anything?
Okay, take it for information. Information brief, council committee reports. Anything anybody wants to add?
What?
What did you say? I said, thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Information brief, council resolution status. Any questions, concerns there? No? Can I have a motion to adopt the information items? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion to go in camera, please?
I'll make the motion to go in camera.
Thank you. Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to go in camera at 8:12 p.m. for the following items, A, business interests of a third party, Section 16, B, confidential evaluations, Section 19.
All in favor? Approved. We are in camera. Camera off, please. Motion to come out of in camera. Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to cut him out of in camera at 8:41 p.m.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Kettles?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Approved. We are adjourned. Camera off, please.